Okay, here we go. Welcome to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole for August 5th, 2025. Our first agenda item is the committee of the whole minutes for July 1st, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Okay, our first discussion item is up to date to the Fashion Place West small area plan to a station area plan. Mark Morris with VODA Landscape and Planning and Chad Wilkinson presenting 15 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, there are consultants not here. I was going to request if we could move to the next agenda item.
Oh, do you want to do, Jennifer, can you go ahead and do that?
Please, we're meeting.
Okay, then we're gonna put you in number two. Is Zachary here to present?
I am covering for Zach.
Well, then we'll go with you then. Okay, so number two, discussion on an ordinance amending section 17.08.020 and 17.68.030 and 17.68.040 and 17.68.060 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to landscaping requirements. Chad Wilkinson is presenting 15 minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited to be here. This has been a long time coming. This has been an effort that's going on before I came back to Murray. And we're excited to be to this point in the, in the effort. Let me give this to go over to our other screen here. Just briefly while I'm monkeying around with this. We've got in the audience tonight Aaron Frisk, who represents our water division of the Public Works Department, very involved in this amendment as well. This is really an amendment related to water conservation and specifically adopting standards that allow people to take advantage of the water savers, Utah Water Savers. Can I stand for just a second? Let me try to unfllow the background here. This ordinance is, it really is about making some changes that will allow us to be eligible for these water saver programs and specifically reducing the amount of turf.
He's still good. That's why. This is still.
Yeah, there were.
Can I have one more couple?
It was, it was competing there, huh?
Yep.
Thank you.
What's the difference between flip your, what's it called?
Flip your strip?
Flip your strip and this particular.
So it's just a different program. This gives you some additional funding that's available to do more than just flip or strip. You can actually landscape your, more of your yard with this, additional incentive. Again, it's not a. Is that a no? Come on up, Aaron.
So the state's program will give you a $3 per square foot rebate incentive for, for converting your turf grass to zirascates. So instead of doing flip your strip, you'll be, citizens will, residents will be able to apply for the Utah Water Savior Program.
So it's more money, right?
More money per square foot. You can do your whole lot if you want, if you wanted to zirescape your, your lot. They don't have any restrictions like that.
Oh, that's.
So they also have other programs as well. So if you also were to convert your plant, finer area from a overhead spray to drip system. So if you do do a zirescape program, they found that trees have been failing and dying from the, from when they convert the water. They'll now give you rebate up to five trees if they, if they were to not make it through the zirescape.
And are we going to let our citizens know that this is available?
Absolutely. So I've been wanting to see the kind of engagement we're gonna get to tonight. I've been talking with Central Utah Water Conservancy District, Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. Those are the big districts that manage Utah Water Savers. So we will have a big, kind of an educational night that we will promote with them. Hopefully we get some residents come out. We do have residents that are excited that we're.
Yes, I have a few residents that have called me on this and have pushed me for it. So that's why.
Yeah, well, top spot.
Yep.
So before we get to that point though, we do have to change our ordinance to meet those, those standards. I'll just give, well, Ben's working on this. I'll just give kind of a brief summary. There's two categories of changes that we're making. One is to our commercial standards. The commercial standards are a little bit different than the residential standards. When I say commercial, I'm also looking at things like multifamily apartments. Those are in that same commercial category. Those require some reductions in the amount of turf. There's a maximum amount of lawn. There we go. Looks like we can see the fluffy up there, my little petlings sort of. Awesome. Thanks, Ben. So just, there's a few definitions. I'm not gonna go to, into much detail about this. But again, make some changes to our landscapes and memory requirements. These are some of these are cleanup items. We don't take formal paper copies anymore. So we need to change some of that to just reflect that we take in digital standard or digital plans now. This is an important change, not really, doesn't have as much to do with the water wise. But we used to require 50% landscape bed coverage at the time of planting. We're gonna change that to maturity. If you do 50% of planting, it can be sometimes even too much, right? So we wanna make sure that, and that matches the Utah Water Savers Program. It's not necessarily required though. So this is the, this is the piece that talks about our commercial standards again. One of the big things is you have to, if you're gonna plant turf, it has to be in an area that lawn and grass can survive, right? That's actually maintainable. So eight foot minimum area. In the, in the commercial areas, you can see that it can't exceed 20% of the total landscape area. That, there is an exception to that. That would be for active recreation areas. So think of a school, think of a, you know, that type of a use where you have people using a ball field. Those are the exceptions. Otherwise, 20%, you can't be planted on something that's too steep. One of the reasons, well, one thing is hard to maintain, but it also runs off, right? So we wanna avoid that. On the residential side of things, it changes a little bit. It's not exceeding 35% of the total landscape area for the front and side yards. That's an important distinction. There is an exception also here for small residential lots. Sometimes when you have a PUD or something with a smaller residential lot, if it's less than, total landscape area is less than 250 square feet, then there's a little bit of an exception there for, for some of those standards. So the part of that is that that landscape area is just so small at that point that some of these standards really would be hard to really administer in any case. So again, we, we feel like this is good. You guys have had the conversation that, that would have occurred right now already, which is this is a good recommendation for the, for the community. This will be another option that people will have. I think there was a question that came up that I wanted to answer. I think Pam, you asked a couple of weeks ago about whether this is mandatory or not. It is. It is mandatory for those new developments. So it's required if you're a new development. For people that are existing though, it would be a choice, right? They'd have a choice to make. But any, any new development would be required to meet these standards going forward. And there are certain things with commercial development, certain, I guess, levels of redevelopment where these standards would be required as well. So if they do a, a certain level of redevelopment, they'd have to meet these standards as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions. Aaron's here to answer questions too. He's already done a good job with the Utah Water Savior Program.
I'm very excited for this. Residents are very excited for this too. Ones that are on corner lots that will help them immensely. Thank you.
And we've already run, my understanding is we already ran this by the folks in the, yeah, Jordan Valley and sent this over to Candice Shobol, who's the Water Conservation Manager for the DNR. And she approved it. She said, you guys did a great job. Okay?
Yeah.
Amendment, so.
I'm excited.
So I have one question. Cottonwood emailed or called about how it affects them, Cottonwood High School. What was that?
I, I'm not sure. Did I go with Zach? I'm not.
Yeah, it's in the minutes from a planning commission. It said that they, they received one phone call from Grass School District with questions regarding grass at Cottonwood High School.
Yeah, it wouldn't, as I said, they're exempt if it's recreational grass and they're existing. So there's two, two exemptions for them. Unless they do a massive, massive redo of their campus, that would be when we'd have that conversation. We would hope that some of these partners, I'll just give you an example. When we looked at some of these things in Layton, some of those big developments actually were good partners and said, this makes total sense to us. Let's just redo this right now. And we were able to reduce the amount of turf on some of those steep slope areas because of that. So a lot of times partners will just step forward. Yeah, they're exempt for two reasons right now. Existing development and recreational grass.
Do we have an enforcement, an enforcement built into this?
So with new development, the enforcement upfront would be that as we approve that new development, the landscape plans will be approved by, by us, staff would approve those. So they'll have to meet those new standards. In the other cases where we talked about redevelopment of properties, that would be reviewed through either business license or the planning review through a conditional use permit, whatever the case may be. This, there is one other change that I didn't mention, and that is that in the past, we have not required landscape plans for single family homes. We're gonna have to start doing that because of this requirement. Now, Murray doesn't see a lot of single family homes, predominantly built out in that front. But when we do have those, they will have to provide us with a landscape plan so we can ensure they meet that standard.
Well, trip, you have trip lane, that is. So they'll have to follow this, correct?
Yeah, anything that was approved previous to this ordinance won't have to. We'd love to have them, we've heard to do, but yeah.
I've got neighbor works doing that.
All developers are accustomed to these standards. It's everywhere in Salt Lake Valley and a lot of Utah Valley have adopted these standards.
Yeah, we're not so tail and.
Yeah, it's got sense. We're, we're the one.
We're the last one.
Last ones in Salt Lake Valley, yes.
It's crazy. So we had one commissioner that voted no.
Yeah, there's a concern and it comes up every place I've been where we've talked about this, about mandating what someone could do with their yard, right? So there was a concern, yeah, that was expressed by that commissioner about feeling like this overstepped the bounds of what the city ought to be doing in terms of requiring instead of just making it voluntary. Because it is required for new development.
Good.
But then I was told, just rip it out and put your own stuff in there.
There are some good, good requirements for the Water Savers Program and it doesn't just allow just rock, right? So that's, that is one good thing. Landscapers still require. Any other questions?
Great. Thank you. I'm excited. Thanks.
There's a lot of other things coming down the pipe with our new partnership that we've been building with Central Utah Water Conservancy District that we're gonna be happy to share with you guys here soon.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Eric.
Bye, Aaron. Okay, now we're up back to number one with the update to Fashion Place West Small Area Plan to a Station Area Plan. Mark Morris with VODA Landscape and Chad.
Thanks, yeah. I'm really happy to, happy to have Mark here tonight. Happy to see you.
It's been a while, Mark.
As you know, this is a brief introduction. The state requires cities to have fixed rail transit stations to adopt a stationary plan. We've done one for Fire Clay North already. I think it should probably plug this three. It should probably plug it now. So we've been able to adopt one of these. We're working on some of the other ones. We're working on our central station. This is a, kind of a unique. So this is a kind of a unique stationary plan that we just recently did a small area plan in this area.
There we go.
There we go. So we just did a small area plan a few years ago in this area. So really, in the case of Fashion Place West, it's more than update, just making sure that we, there's a few things that the state has identified that we need to update or to include to make it compliant with state law. So Mark's gonna go through where we're at on this plan, kind of where we're going. This is gonna be a quick review, a quick planning process, a few months instead of half a year or a year because we already have done so much of the work. So turn the camera over to Mark. Morris from VODA.
Great. Good to see you all again.
Hi.
Like Chad mentioned, we have a small area plan that was adopted by the city in the first part of 2021. My team had worked with staff, elected officials, the public during 2020 to develop a small area plan. As Chad mentioned, the state recently has come down with some specific requirements of every city that has a fixed rail transit station. I understand you're already in the middle of some stationary plans for your other, other rail stations. The Fashion Place West Small Area Plan, usually a small area plan is whatever the community determines it should be. Station Area Plan is very similar, but because the state has some specific requirements, we basically have till the end of the year to add to this small area plan and we'll retitle it a Station Area Plan. So for the most part, we have all of our bases covered. There are a few things that the state requires that we'll kind of focus our attention on. Their requirements are very much focused on implementation. And so they wanna know in the next five years, what's going to happen? Who's in charge of making that happen? What sort of assignments are gonna be made? As you all know, the region is in the middle of a lot of development pressure. And so these particular locations around the valley is where a lot of that, there's an opportunity to do some very targeted planning to make sure that what's happening around the rail stations is, you know, supportive of that, that service. I, this should be in your packet. I think Zach sent this to you. So this is kind of an overview of what those state requirements are. They've been in place for a couple of years. We have until the end of the year, as I mentioned, to, to get in compliance. The stationary plan itself has been adopted or sort of endorsed by the WFRC. UTA will involve UDOT as a partner in the process as well. Again, it'll be quick. So when we come back to talk about the process and all of that, that adoption, hopefully you'll be familiar with what we're, what we're asking for. So we have a meeting with a steering committee of planning staff. We have a planning commission member who's in that group. If someone on the city council would like to sit in on those discussions as well, just so one of you has an understanding of, of what the small area plan entails, we can add one of you to that, to that group as well. I think Diana's the only one in this group that was around in 21 when this was adopted. So this is a summary, well, this isn't a summary. This is the text from the House legislation that requires that. It's very focused on land use, transportation improvements. A lot of it puts the onus on the city to say, what are the infrastructure improvements that need to happen around, around the community, around that particular neighborhood to make the access to the rail better for everybody? I got a question out of, no, you're all good. Okay. One of the things that they say is it has to include a half mile radius around the platform. This circle shows that half mile.
This is my district.
Half mile radius. The colored in area is where that small area plan was applied. So we're gonna adjust the boundary a little bit. Some of these areas, you know, things that are on the west side of I-15, those neighborhoods aren't gonna change in any way. And so we'll kind of tailor our half mile radius to sort of recognize some immutable things like I-15 and rail corridor that wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be making land use recommendations, you know, a place like that. That's, that's really on the other side of something.
Yes, part of this is my district.
Great, great. And we may have some specific questions for you as we, as we get into it. We also are involving Midvale City. There's a little sliver on the south side that's in Midvale. And they've been, they've been involved in the discussions so far. The existing plan, I can have Zach send you a link to that plan that was adopted in 21. A lot of it was focused on housing. I'd say the housing concerns and issues from 2020 and 21 have only increased. And so housing will continue to be of concern, connectivity. So things like transportation, infrastructure improvements, sidewalk improvements, bike lane improvements, those, those types of things. This plan also included some design guidelines that will continue to be, be in the plan. We'll, we had a very rough implementation plan. It didn't really make assignments like the state wants to see. And so we'll probably spend the majority of that time focused on, okay, implementation. What are the things that are within the city's power to do? What are the things that the city is gonna need a partner like UTA or UDOT to accomplish? What are the things that private property owners and all of those need to be dialed in to accomplish? UTA owns a good portion of land directly adjacent to the platform. There's a pretty large park in right area. A lot of the discussion that we had around, around the implementation plan was about context. That context is very important in the planning world. What's, what's appropriate next to a rail platform is not necessarily appropriate a half mile from a rail platform. And so really focusing on what is the scale that's appropriate in these areas. None of this is, I would say, gonna push anyone to do anything they don't wanna do. It's really saying, what are some carrots that we can give for UTA to, to develop? Or to have something that would introduce, you know, development for the community that would be of the benefit. So this particular part of your city, it is very much focused around the community around it. You've got Fashion Place Mall. That is very much a regional draw. There are people coming from all over the valley to Fashion Place Mall. They are not coming to the Fashion Place West rail, rail area. So the focus of the scale there would really be focused on what are the things that could improve that community services, things that would be of a benefit there. But again, that scale would be wildly different from one part of the community to the other. So previously, the implementation plan had been kind of short term, midterm, long term. We'll keep that format, but we'll beef it up a bit to kind of say, okay, here are some very specific steps. The state will be expecting every five years a report back on each one of these stationary plans. And so they wanna see, okay, you told us in the next five years, here's what's gonna happen. What's the report on what's, what's happened or why hasn't some of these things happened? Fortunately, a lot of the things in plans like this are policies. And so the city has all the power to look at what are your policies and what are they encouraging as far as walkability, livability in the community, investment in open space, investment in green spaces. All of those things are really in a city's purview to accomplish. UDOT, as you know, is a partner that can be difficult. And so I think when we talk to UDOT, making sure that we understand what motivates them and how do we do things that can improve the livability of the community, but also help, you know, UDOT improve what they're, what they're doing. During this previous process, we spent a lot of time talking with people who were working at the mall, people who were using the rail station. The biggest complaint we heard was, you know, I work at the mall. I get off at the train station. That walk from the mall to the rail platform is less than half a mile. It feels like 10 miles. And that's because the infrastructure is not as good as it could be. And so I think the intent here is to say, what are some steps that we can take incrementally to improve, again, the livability of the neighborhood, meet the state's requirements and think long term about what are ways to improve, improve the neighborhood?
Anything else?
Chad?
Oh.
Okay. So we'll be back. As Chad mentioned, like this is gonna move along pretty quickly because we're really targeting a few very specific things. But again, that adoption process, we have to be done before the end of the year in order to meet that state, state requirement. But we're already most of the way there.
So thanks, Mark. This is a preview. Besides this one, we have two slivers, just like Midville has, that are, we're also required to adopt our sliver portion of that. There's one in Taylor'sville. There's one in Mill Creek. So you'll see those. Those will be very short processes because we have just tiny little bits of land that go into their half mile circle. So with the adoption of Fire Clay North, those two slivers, and this plan by the end of the year, will meet our statutory requirement, which will give us additional time to work on the biggest planning effort with the station areas, which is our platform to platform connection here adjacent to IH. So, to IMC, so.
That one doesn't have to be done by the end of the year?
As long as we get those other four adopted by the end of the year, then we have another, another year to finish that one.
That's cool.
And we're in the process already on that one, right?
We are, yeah. We're quite a ways along. Phase one, we're in phase two of that one now, so. In fact, we had a big debate today on that.
Yeah, the other meeting.
Couple of you attend, yep.
So, so for those of us who are new in the council, you guys talked about this. I don't wanna get into the weeds, but how do we get information so we can get out of the weeds on our own and then ask you questions?
I think that's great. I think Mark suggested and we will follow up with this. Zach can send you a link to the small area plan. That, like I said, with this particular planning area, the advantage we have is we've done a lot of the work that's required already and recently. So we will get that link to you so you can start to look at that plan. As we have continued effort on this new update, we'll keep you informed on what those updates are. And I think as was stated by Mark, we'd love to have a counselor on that steering committee so you can be updated as well.
Yeah, I just saw a visual of a lot of high density housing that I wanna study, what you guys have talked about.
Sure. And in the document, you'll see again that context. We've kind of split up where things are appropriate versus where they may not be as appropriate. There's also a summary in the appendix of the public outreach. We did a public survey. We did some one-on-one discussions, but that's all in the document.
I'll, I'll take a look at that and then ask the appropriate questions.
Yeah, and the good news is that there was a lot of public participation in that effort before. So people are aware of what the plan was for that area. So yeah, it shouldn't be a surprise to the neighborhood what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Then who do you have to report to in December?
So, well, eventually have to have this adopted by the Wasatch Rock Regional Council.
Okay.
Commission, excuse me. They'll, they'll approve it. I guess, I'm not sure if it's called approve or.
Right.
Ratify or whatever they call it, but they'll, they'll have a chance to, to basically give their, you know, the work you've done. But the important part is that you all approve our portion of it by that December deadline.
Okay. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we are on discussion item number three. Discussion on an ordinance amending section 17.92.080 and 17.96.100 and 17.100.100 and 17.128.070 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to extension into setback areas for all residential zone. Chad, you're presenting.
Thank you. It will probably take me less time to explain this than it takes to talk this. This is actually a really, we're really.
Drink of water.
The reason all those sections is we're abandoning all of our different residential zones to have the same standard. But this really comes down to a way for us to allow people to do more things with their property, which we think is a good thing. This is a request that we've received over the years to allow for some, some small extensions. I'm actually gonna go to the picture at the very end to begin with. I think it shows. This is the kind of thing that we're trying to allow. We have a lot of people that want to cover usable space in their backyard. This would be, you know, covering a patio, covering a deck.
Oh, yeah.
So this is the type of structure that this ordinance is getting at. Now, with that in mind, I'll kind of show the parameters. There are impacts, of course, visual and other impacts to neighboring properties once you start to encroach into setbacks. So the standard as written, we have a 25 foot, in this case, 25 foot example, excuse me, 25 foot setback in this example on both front and rear. What the proposal would be is to allow for some encroachments into that. Up to half of the rear setback, but no closer than 10 feet. And up to seven feet in front, but no closer than 20 feet. You can see by the size of those, the size of these additions are also regulated. Just to make sure we don't have a huge visual impact, again, understanding that we're going into that area that's typically been open. The other idea for this, in restricting this, is to make sure that we're not increasing that pervious or impervious surface too much. This kind of gives you an idea. It's up to half the width of the dwelling. So you can see that'd be the area that we use to calculate that half width is the crosshatched area with that addition being that dark area there that's shown on the, on the picture.
Does a garage count for that width measurement?
It can. In the ca, in this case, wood, right? You have, you've got the garage there. But it kind of, you know, if it's a detached garage, no, but an attached garage, yeah, that could count towards that width at the back.
So hold on, I'll push on. So on this example, you're using, you're not using it in the front yard? That counting it for the width?
That, that shows it being counted for, well, counting the garage.
Yeah, the, you do count the garage.
It looks like maybe that, when they put the drawing together, they didn't count it, but you could count that.
You could, okay.
Yeah, that width. Maybe go back to the actual language. So here's the, here's the standard. It has to be no more than one story in height, which is what that photo at the very end showed. It can't be more than half the width of the main dwelling. It has to be unenclosed, so it's not a way for us to increase that, you know, livable area for, for the residents. It's just, these are really just covers for canopies, covers for, or excuse me, covers for patios, covers for decks. The type of footing and foundation is even called out. It's gotta be just a, a spot footing or a, someplace where you'd have a column resting. It can't be a continuous footing or foundation. And then, uh, again, it can't be any closer than twenty feet in the front and no closer than ten feet in the rear. So this was reviewed by the planning commission, uh, they did, uh, unanimously recommend the city council approve this amendment. Again, this is one, we do get these requests, um, occasionally, quite, quite a bit actually, for people to go recover some of these decks and things that were already allowed, patios, uh, we think this is a good way for us to allow people to do more with their property, and we recommend that the council follow the planning commission's, uh, recommendation.
So the sides have to be open?
Yes, it has to be.
Could they be like partially, like you built like a half wall?
It has to be, let me read that exact text for you, it has to be entirely open on three sides except for supporting columns, so.
So what about like, like some people put up like mosquito net or something like that, that it kind of encloses it, or glass?
Entirely open, yeah, we're not talking about those kind of, uh, uh, what do you wanna call that?
Sunroom?
Sunroom, this, this is just for covering those kind of typically, uh, you know, outdoor kind of uses like decks and patios, yep.
So would sunroom fall under a different law?
Sunrooms would just be in addition to the home, they'd have to meet the setbacks for the home and.
So, okay, so I saw somebody's deck, it's at their house today. They had, so it's pretty much a half wall because they have like a TV on one side, they have like a grill on the other side. But it's open, and then you have the third, so would that be acceptable under this code?
So what, I, I'm not exactly sure I'm following you, you got like part of the wall that comes down off the ceiling or what?
Yeah, so yeah, yeah, comes down from the ceiling, but there is opening for the rest of the deck, so it's kind of a, like half a wall. Does that make sense?
I, I think.
Do you want me to draw?
I think, I think, I think they're following, yeah.
Here we go.
Feel free to draw, I think, I think you got it.
I've got a yellow marker, nobody's gonna see this.
Yellow marker, come on, teacher, impress us.
So, oh my, yeah, you can't see the spot. Is there a different marker?
There's a blue.
There's a blue?
Oh, that's better.
This is why, okay, so you have the housing structure right here, you still can't see this. And then there is a wall, pillar, pillar, wall. So this part's open, 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 but there are small walls here, and this is the back of the house, does that make sense?
It does, okay, the, the idea is, as I described, th, this type of, of a cover. So not, not, you know, a partial cover or something, it is, it is supposed to be open on three sides. And the reason for that is that we are, keep in mind, we are encroaching on the neighboring property, right? We're, we're allowing that structure now to go within ten feet of the neighbor's property line. So we wanna be, we wanna be careful about what types of structures we're approving there, um.
Does it have to be attached to the house?
This is for attached, yeah, attached structure, yep.
So what if it's not attached?
If it's not attached, it falls under the accessory structure standards of the code, yep.
So if you don't encroach within this ten foot or whatever area, uh, it can be just a regular, like supposing this right here was like forty feet from the neighbor's yard, but could he still do that?
Oh, they can do all kinds of things if it was forty feet, they could enclose it, they could do sunrooms, it's, you have a minimum setback of twenty-five feet in most of our residential zones, so if you're, if you're that far away, you could do all kinds of things in that space, yeah. This is, this is for those instances where we have someone that's, you know, their home was built with that minimum setback, and they just wanna have a reasonable, um, extension into there for this covered space to cover a deck or a patio.
So this will help people with smaller yards, right?
That's right, yeah.
Say, I wanna cover my yard, but I can't right now.
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good clarification.
Yeah, that makes, that makes more sense now that way.
Yeah.
A little dance song, I appreciate you repeating it a few times.
Yeah, yeah, I was with people, so that's, yeah, that's good clarification. So it's just when they're getting up to that ten feet, that's where the plus.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay.
Cause I, I just looked at a satellite photo of my yard and my patio cover maybe longer than half li, my house, you know, so like, I don't wanna take down that cover.
I was gonna say, can you say code enforcement?
You know where I live. I got my permit still.
But that's, that's about point, what about existing?
I got my permits.
If it's permitted, it would be, yeah, your permits, so it's existing.
Yeah, I made sure of that.
And keep in mind that there are different setbacks for different residential zones, so it's just, um, you know, it could be that you have a different setback, I haven't looked at your, your property.
Don't look now, I got a permit.
I don't like, I don't know. And I must have had the sentence. I don't have anything else to say unless you're.
I don't think anybody else wants to say anything.
You answered my question.
Okay, thank you very much, this will come at next meeting for a while.
Our net, last discussion item is discussion number four on the fraud risk assessment. Brenda Moore presenting five minutes, thank you Brenda for being here.
I didn't bring a screening of the fraud risk assessment, but we do this every year. Um, part of the state auditor got tired of mostly small cities and counties, um, all being in the news because somebody committed a fraud. So they, um, instituted this fraud risk assessment, uh, I don't know, four or five years ago. We need to just bring it before council, it just signs of getting a point system. We are at three fifty-five with three ninety-five, which means our risk of, uh, fraud is very low, um, which is anything three fifty-five and above. Uh, we have internal controls, basic separation of duties, we have enough people that we, you know, somebody balances the bank, that does not handle cash, all of that kind of thing. Um, we also have policies on everything that they have, um, listed, procurement behavior, for, a, a way to report, travel, credit cards, um, personal use of our assets, all of those things we all have, we have policies about. Um, I am a CPA, uh, Emily just became a CPFO, so we have two people that, um, have those qualifications now.
That's awesome.
Um, and both Emily, I, and I think Scott have college degrees, so it is our treasurer, um, bachelor's degrees, I have a master's. So we do require, we don't require all employees in the city to sign that they will, um, follow our code of ethics. I require all of the department heads and anyone in my office, um, that handles cash or deals with customers to, to acknowledge once a year that they will abide by our city's code of ethics. I think, um, Jennifer has you guys attest to that. And then, um, after this election, we will make sure that everybody on the council has watched the state auditor's, um, training for, um, council members. It's actually a pretty good video, I watched it just to, because I am on a board with somebody else, and they said, have you watched this? Yes, I have. Um, so we're not perfect in this, just because we don't, we're not big enough to have enough money to have a formal internal audit function, our auditor reviews our internal controls and stuff, that's not anything necessary. We do have the budget committee, but they're not a formal audit committee with five or six or ten people on it that does that. Those two things I don't feel are necessary with our annual audit and his review of our internal controls, and then our knowledge in the office of what needs to be done. So we're at a very low risk level, um, and I have just discussed it, does anybody have any questions?
I don't, I think it looks great.
I know city council has, uh, the authority to ask for audits to happen, right?
Yeah.
If we were to create a regular audit of departments in the city, would that count as a formal function?
Um, probably it could be a formal internal audit thing, but it depends on what you want to audit, um, and why you wanna audit, um, so, yeah, I mean, it possibly could count. We're already at the highest of the risk levels, so very low, any additional points won't change anything, so. Um, but that's not the reason to do it, to have other audits, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? The glowing we put, thank you Brenda.
Awesome.
Hey, is there any other items for the council meeting in the hall? If not, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for coming, everyone.